My name is Dan Carney and if my allergy-stricken voice will allow me, I'm hoping to preside for this entire meeting. This is a meeting of the Board of Trustees with College being held on Thursday, October the ninth, twenty twenty five at twelve thirty P. M. in the community room of the Emerging Technologies and Workforce Building located in two two five College Park Drive, Weatherford, Texas to consider and act upon a posted agenda. I call this meeting to order and I call upon Mr. Brent Baker. He could provide us with an indication.
Happy to. Thank you. Please bow with me. Lord, we're thankful to you for everything we have in this community, for all of our students, for all of our faculty and staff, our leadership, our board, our donors. Thank you for bringing all these people together. Thank you for our board specifically, and please be with them as they deliberate today. In your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, sir. All right, we'll put your eyes on all these and pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the land of the United States of America, the good republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Ms. Worley, has anyone signed up to address the board today?
No, sir.
Thank you very much. How are you today?
I'm great.
Posted agenda item number three is the president's report. Dr. Farmer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair and members of the Weatherford College Board of Trustees, I would like to give a few brief recognitions and employee notices. Recognizations. Congratulations to the Weatherford College volleyball team for their thirty-first consecutive conference victory, the longest volleyball win streak in conference history. Our W C volleyball team is now ranked second in the nation. The Weatherford College Foundation has announced a sixty-two percent year-over-year increase in contributions in the twenty twenty-five fiscal year, excuse me, that should say twenty twenty-four fiscal year, which ended August thirty first. Thank you to our generous donors and congratulations to Brent Baker and our entire foundation board. Our new gold parking lot is open for business. Not only does the covered lot provide shade and weather protection for vehicles, we expect the four hundred and twenty-six newly installed solar panels to reduce our campus utility costs by thousands of dollars. Employee notices. D M A C Local requires the college president to provide the names of contract employees that have resigned since the last board meeting. Dr. Renee Smith, an instructor in our Bachelor of Science in Nursing program, and Mr. Ted Cross, an instructor in our A D N program, have both resigned with respective effective dates of ten twenty-three twenty-five and nine twenty-five twenty-five. We thank Renee and Ted for their service and wish them the very best in future endeavors. Mr. Chairman, that concludes the president's report.
Thank you, Dr. Farmer.
Mr. Chairman.
Sir.
One of the personal privileges, please, I'd like to introduce a guest I have here today, Catherine Vick. Stand up, Catherine. She is a registered nurse over in Dallas and is currently enrolled in a leadership program out of Texas Tech, I guess because we didn't have one here. So anyway, she's joined us as part of her class, and please welcome her.
Thank you, Tom. Glad to have you, Ms. Vick. Glad you're here. Posted agenda item number four is the consent agenda and financial reports. Items A through E have been properly posted and are there. Does anyone on the board have a question or comment about any of those items? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve each of those items as posted?
I so voted.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, please raise your hand, signify. Appears to be unanimous, so approved. Item number five, item number five and six with regard to real estate, I'm going to table those items for the moment and we'll come back to those at a lead point in our meeting. Posted agenda item number seven is reports from President Farmer. Sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As usual, you've been provided with your W W C academic and student services update in your book as well as the annual access and affordability report. And then under agenda item seven C, it is my pleasure to invite Ms. Bailey Brock to the podium. Bailey heads up our financial aid department, and this year she and her team really did a phenomenal job. The federal government changed some of the basket requirements, which slowed the process significantly. That was coupled with record enrollment, as you know, and record numbers of students reaching out for financial aid, and our financial aid team truly stood up and got the job done under very difficult circumstances. So Bailey, thank you for all the work that you and your team have done, and welcome. The floor is yours.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Hello, esteemed board members, Weatherford College stakeholders, and President Farmer. As mentioned, my name is Bailey Brock. I'm the director of financial aid. Thank you for taking the time to hear from me today. I'm excited to present on this topic that's very near and dear to my heart in the Weatherford College's financial aid office. Oh, even better. And so before we get started, I would like to provide an overview of what I will be sharing with you today. Financial aid office's mission and staff, B A F S A application growth, twenty-five, twenty-six federal aid awarded, institutional and performing scholarships, student impact for fall twenty twenty-five, year-over-year comparison, compliance, and looking ahead. Each of these sections helps tell the story of how our team is working to serve students, uphold compliance, and support Weatherford College's mission of access and excellence. So first is our staff. These ladies on the right have been absolutely paramount in processing financial aid and assisting students throughout this busy summer and fall term. As you'll see in my presentation, Weatherford College has experienced tremendous growth in every direction, and these women serve our students with genuine care, empathy, and professionalism. Financial aid can be a confusing process for students and truthfully for anyone outside of the financial aid world, but these ladies, along with our two outstanding part-time employees, Emily Hatch and Amy Nipples, have gone above and beyond to keep operations running smoothly. Together, we remain anchored in our mission to empower all students through a culture of caring, to achieve their full educational potential by delivering appropriate financial resources and support. Our office lives that mission every single day. And as I just mentioned, Weatherford College has experienced exponential growth, including in the financial aid office. In twenty-three, twenty-four, we processed seven thousand four hundred and ninety-three B A F S A applications. In twenty-four, twenty-five, that number rose to seventy-nine hundred. And so far in twenty-five, twenty-six, and it's only October, we have received ten thousand nine hundred and fifty-three applications. But July twenty twenty-five, before the new academic year had even begun, we had already surpassed the total number of applications received all of last year. This search reflects not only the college's enrollment growth, but also the increasing number of students who rely on financial aid to make higher education possible. And so far for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, we have awarded a total of twenty-three million, one hundred and seventy-seven thousand, nine hundred and thirty-four dollars and fifty-two cents in federal student aid. Of this total, sixty-eight percent represents need-based grants, so P L and S E O G, funds that directly support our economically disadvantaged students. Thirty-two percent represents federal student loans. This balance reflects our ongoing commitment to prioritizing need-based funding wherever possible, ensuring that students who face the greatest financial barriers have access to higher education. And while this chart might look like we've awarded fewer scholarships, that is not the case. It's important to remember, we are still only in October. These amounts are currently posted to student accounts, and we can fully expect these numbers to exceed last year's total by the end of the academic year. Weatherford College's scholarship program continues to grow stronger thanks to the generosity of our donors and the dedication of our institutional teams who evaluate and award these funds each year. So we'll take a closer impact, a closer look at the impact for fall twenty twenty-five. For these figures, we are only considering aid that is processed directly through the financial aid office with a couple of business office waivers, so this is not a comprehensive total. But for fall twenty twenty-four, Weatherford College enrolled six thousand six hundred and one students. Of those, eighty percent received some sort of financial assistance, whether that be federal aid, scholarships, or state waivers. Within that group, forty-seven percent, or three thousand and seventy-five students, received federal aid specifically. Now comparing that to fall twenty twenty-five, our percentages are staying pretty consistent, but we expect this final total to increase even further as applications continue to be processed and awards are applied on a daily basis. What this tells us is simple. Financial aid matters. It touches the vast majority of our students and is often the deciding factor in whether a student can and will persist and complete their program. And now we'll zoom out and take a little bit of a wider look at the academic year. So in comparing twenty-four, twenty-five to twenty-five, twenty-six, we've seen a steady increase across all categories. Gift dates of grants and scholarships increased from eleven point seven million to fifteen point seven million. Federal aid rose from seventeen point six million to twenty-three point two million, and our comprehensive aid total climbed from twenty-five point nine million to thirty-one point four million. And again, it's only October. Thirty-one point four million is the figure currently applied to student accounts, so we can fully expect that this will continue to climb. And while compliance might not always make the headlines, it's one of the most vital aspects of what we do. Every dollar we award must align with complex federal and state regulations. Our adherence to these rules keeps Weatherford College in good standing with the Department of Ed and the Texas Higher Education Core Name Board, ensuring we remain eligible for funding that makes our student success possible. Our office performs monthly reconciliations, manages R two T four processing, submits required federal state reports, and maintains detailed audit documentation, much more than just review and B A F S A applications. Compliance is not just about rules, it's about integrity. It's how we protect our students, safeguard the college, and uphold the trust placed in us by the community. When we do this well, everyone benefits. And as we look forward, our priorities are clear: sustainability, innovation, and service. We are continuing to encourage professional development for our staff. Financial aid changes constantly, weekly even. By keeping our team trained and competent, we strengthen compliance and elevate the student experience. Secondly, we're expanding our outreach efforts, both digitally and in person with area high schools, to help students understand the financial aid earlier in their journey, reducing confusion and increasing timely completion. And above all else, we'll continue to center our work around the reason we do what we do, and that's Weatherford College students. Financial aid isn't just about numbers, it's about opportunity. Every grant, loan, and scholarship represents a story, a dream that's now within reach because of the work being done at Weatherford College. In closing, I want to thank you all for your support and partnership. The financial aid office is proud to be part of Weatherford College's mission: opening doors, removing barriers, and helping students achieve more than they ever thought possible. Thank you.
Ms. Brock, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Do you have any questions? No questions from Ms. Brock? Yes, Dr. Marley.
The average student that starts at Weatherford College, whether that's this campus or Wise County campus, they can depend on approximately, if I read your numbers right, about eighty-two percent chance of getting a scholarship.
I would say that that's pretty fair, yes, sir.
Is that, is the government shutdown affecting us?
It is not currently. No, it is not. We still are able to draw down any funds and process financial aid as we normally would.
So is there any outlook, what is the outlook on that eighty-two percent? Is there any chance that the percentage would come up higher?
Definitely. I would expect that as we're continuing to process financial aid and awarding and getting new students in, we're going to see that number continue to rise and rise and rise, with the goal of eventually having everyone have some sort of financial assistance.
This is, the next part of this question goes probably not to you, but to somebody else, probably a dean, one of the deans down there. Are, the quality of our average student that comes in and applies for a scholarship, is that going up? The qualifications, the students that qualify for a scholarship, is that going up? Are we getting better students, prepared students out of high schools, et cetera? Are we?
We can, we can run some data for you on looking at the G P A changes over the course of time, and I'll ask institutional research for that, but even our athletes that are coming in, they are all achieving three point oh and higher. They were the highest GPAs in the national conference, and that's just one sector, but I'll be happy to run some data.
That's all right. I'm just curious if we're, if the quality of students hitting our, hitting Weatherford College is getting better or not.
Definitely our graduation rates and the percentage of students graduating are increasing, and they have over the last five years in looking at that data.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for that, Doctor. Appreciate it much.
If I may briefly add to that response, in addition to the incredible work that Bailey Brock and her team in financial aid are doing, when you couple that with the quality work that Brent Baker and the Weatherford College Foundation are doing to help our students with private money, we now have, I've said it before, but it's worth repeating, an astounding eighty-eight percent of our students receive either grants or scholarships at Weatherford College, when the peer group industry averages sixty percent. So very, very proud of the work that not only Bailey Brock, but also Brent Baker and his team are doing to support our students financially.
Very important point to bring up, very important. Thank you, Dr. Farmer, also. I think that brings us down to agenda item number seven on reports, and Dr. Farmer, do you have anything else under that area?
No, sir. We, we are ready to move on to agenda item eight. Thank you.
Then item number eight, announcements. Brent, do you have something for?
Yes, sir. Very busy month ahead, Mr. Carney. You all know about our rodeo coming up tomorrow night and Saturday night, the inaugural Lone Star Region Rodeo that Johnny Emmons and his team are putting together at the Parker County Sheriff's Posse. It'll be a great event both Friday and Saturday night. President Farmer mentioned our volleyball team. We do have multiple volleyball matches left, including the regional tournament, which we will host on November sixth through the eighth at the Graver Athletic Center. Multiple fine arts events coming up, like the Jazz Orchestra October fourteenth, like a piano recital by Dr. He Young's song on November the sixth, songwriter forum as well coming up. And then our theater department has a musical comedy, October twenty-third to the twenty-sixth, is called the Twenty-Fifth Annual Putnam County Spelling Bee. That should be a lot of fun. And then our Safe Halloween, which we've done for many years, our, our campus police department does a phenomenal job. We expect probably five to seven thousand children here the evening of October thirty first.
That's always a big turnout event up here, isn't it?
They do a great job on it. Yes, sir.
Thank you very much, Brent, as always.
Thank you.
We're now down to going into closed session on real property and personnel matters. We will go into adjournment for that at twelve forty-seven P. M.
Braver Athletics Center, multiple fine arts events coming up like the Jazz Orchestra October fourteenth, um, like a piano recital by Dr. He Young Song on November the sixth, songwriter forum as well, um, coming up and then our theater department has a musical comedy October twenty-third to the twenty-sixth. It's called the Twenty-Fifth Annual Putnam County Spelling Bee. That should be a lot of fun. And then our Safe Halloween, which we've done for many years, our, our campus police department does a phenomenal job. We expect probably five to seven thousand children here the evening of October thirty-first.
That's always a big turnout event up here, isn't it?
They do a great job, yes sir.
Thank you very much Brent, as always.
Thank you.
We're now down to going into closed session on real property and personnel matters. Uh, we will go into adjournment for that at twelve forty-seven P M.
Okay, time now is 1:43 PM still on Thursday, October the 9th, 2025, continuation of our board meeting of today. We're going to go back to item number five on the posted agenda, consideration and possible action proposal with sale of 7.16 acres of vacant land in Westford, Texas, number RFP 0226. Dr. Cantrell, you're listed on here, but is there anything that you need to comment about that?
There's nothing unique about it. We had just recently put that up for sale.
Right. Okay, I think we have a motion to be presented by my vice chair, Mr. Dowd. Do you have a motion for us, sir?
I do. I make a motion that the Board of Trustees reject a proposal received by DNF Custom Materials Limited to purchase 7.16 acres of vacant land on the southeast corner of Highway 180 and Rick Williamson Highway in the amount of $600,000.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second? All in favor of the motion made, raise your hand, please. Appears to be unanimous, so approved. Item number six, going back to what we had tabled earlier, consideration and possible action for proposal on sale of 45.682 acres of vacant land in Westford, Texas, RFP 03-26. Again, Dr. Cantrell, is there any, do you have anything else you need to say about that?
No, I will, I'll tell you this, that the amount proposed does exceed the appraised value on them.
Exceeds appraised value, okay. Mr. Dowd, do you have a motion for us?
Yes, I make a motion that the Board of Trustees accept the proposal submitted by Woodmont Land Company to purchase 5.063 acres of vacant land on West BP Fielder Road, survey parcel number two in the amount of $1,620,000, as well as authorize Dr. Todd Allen Farmer to negotiate, enter into, and execute all documents related to the sale of the 5.063 acres of land.
Very good. Second to that motion, Dr. Marlin, all in favor, please raise your hand. Appears to be unanimous, thank you very much, so approved and so passed. That takes us down to agenda item number 10, further consideration and possible action on real property. We have no other action items in that regard. Posted agenda item number 11, consideration and possible action which regard to appointment, appointment evaluation, reassignment duties discipline or dismissal of a public officer or employee, and we have no further action items to present on that. Item number 12, do I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Right here.
And a second? All in favor, raise your hand. We are adjourned.
Thank you.